Welcome to the Upshur County Commission meeting for November 7, 2019. We will move to a moment of silent meditation and prayer followed by the pledge of allegiance. And then we'll do the approval of the minutes for October 31st, 2019.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
So I've an opportunity to give a minute?
Yes.
There's no additions or corrections. I'll entertain a motion to approve.
I'm going to approve the notes.
A second?
We have a motion in a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Same sign? Motion carries. 9:05, we have an appointment with Tenerton's Lines Club, presentation of proclamation for Diabetes Awareness Month. At 9:15, we have an appointment with Laura B. Meadows, Executive Director of the Upshur County Convention and Visitors Bureau, presentation of quarterly report for July through September 2019. At 1 o'clock, we have an appointment with Joe Stanton, former insurance agency, review for fiscal year 2021 insurance options. We have a good two meeting at the Upshur County Administrative Annex. Decide to lead to executive session for West Virginia Code 6-9A-4. At 2:30, we're going to review the letters of interest and resumes for the appointment to the prosecutor and attorney. Decide to also lead to executive session for West Virginia Code 6-9A-4. It's 9:05, but sorry. How are you?
I'm doing great. I hope you all are too.
How's your girl? Thank you.
Just a personal note on diabetes. West Virginia is number one in the nation, the highest number of diabetics, which I am one. And the worst thing is, we increased from several years ago to 10 million across the United States. We're now close to 30 million across. So it's something we need to start working on really hard. Diabetes Awareness Month, November 2019. Whereas diabetes affects 26 million people in the United States and is a serious disease for which there is no known cure and which is the seventh leading cause of death by disease in the United States. Whereas another 79 million adults have three diabetes, which is a condition which puts them at greater risk for developing type 2 diabetes. And if current trends continue, 1 in 3 American adults will have diabetes by 2050. Whereas type 1 diabetes is an autoimmune disease in which a person's pancreas stops producing insulin, a hormone that enables people to get energy from food. It occurs when the body's immune system attacks and destroys the insulin-producing cells in the pancreas called beta cells. While its causes are not yet entirely understood, scientists believe that genetic factors and environmental triggers are involved. Its onset has nothing to do with diet or lifestyle. There is no prevention for type 1 diabetes and at present, no cure. Whereas type 1 diabetes strikes both children and adults at any age. It comes on suddenly, causes dependence on injected or pumped insulin for life, and carries the constant threat of devastating complications. Whereas diabetes is the number one cause of blindness in the United States, diabetes has many faces affecting everyone, old and young alike. Caucasians, African Americans, Latinos, Native Americans, Asian Americans, and Pacific Islanders, with minority populations in the United States having an increased risk for developing the disease. Whereas an increase in community awareness of risk factors and symptoms related to diabetes can improve the likelihood that people with diabetes could get attentional need before suffering the devastating complications of the disease. Now, the Upshur County Commission hereby proclaim November 2019 as Diabetes Awareness Month in the county of Upshur in the state of West Virginia and encourage all citizens to help fight this disease and its deadly complications, including heart and kidney disease, stroke, blindness, and amputation by increasing awareness of the risk factors for diabetes and providing the support for those suffering from it.
Bill, approve the proclamation. Do you entertain a motion to approve?
I'll make a motion to approve.
Second.
We have a motion in a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Same sign? Motion carries.
Thank you.
I'll take a comment for a little time. Okay, we're going to move on to items for discussion, action, or approval. Order appointing the sheriff of Upshur County as the administrator of the estate of the county, William S. C. I'll entertain a motion to approve.
I'm going to approve.
A second?
We have a motion in a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Same sign? Motion carries. Sue corresponds from Terry D. Reed requesting reappointment to the Upshur County Building Commission. Upon approval, his term will expire on November 10th, 2024. I'll entertain a motion to approve.
I'll make a motion to approve.
Second.
We have a motion in a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Same sign? Motion carries. Three, approval and signature of correspondence from the West Virginia State Auditor's Office regarding Hodgesville, Tenerton's PSD's noncompliance with West Virginia Code 16-13A-11 by failing to remit an annual audit to the county commission and further requesting for the auditor's office to prioritize performing audits for these two agencies. I'll entertain a motion to approve.
I'm going to approve.
A second?
We have a motion in a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Same sign? Motion carries. Four, review of national prescription.
Copied.
Copied litigation exclusion request form. Requester consider remaining as a class member of negotiations class certified in the Reed National Prescription Copied Legation for requests exclusion and not share any potential negotiated class settlement.
So your attorney with Fitzsimmons' firm is recommending that you do sign this exclusion forms?
I'll entertain a motion to approve.
I'm going to approve. You're going to be to have a turn if you want to follow the instructions.
I agree. We have a motion in a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Same sign? Motion carries. For your information, certain items may require discussion, action, and/or approval by the commission. One, correspondence from Governor John Justice announcing the approval of a justice assistant grant, also known as DAG, awarded in the amount of $15,000 to be utilized to support the position of a prevention resource officer at the Buchanan Upshur Middle School. Two is Upshur County building permits. Three is Upshur County mileage reports. Four is public notices. Five, there are no appointments needed or upcoming. Tabled items, certain items may require discussion, action, and/or approval by the commission. One is the hearing upon the petition complaint of the Upshur County Safe Sites and Structures Enforcement Agency, Chapman case number 10118-01, that's in the Warren text, District Tax Map 6P, parcel number 11.
So that hearing was supposed to take place in magistrate court yesterday, however, it's been continued until, I believe, November 13th.
Let's just keep the table still down this place. It's 9:15, and we have a point from Laura. How are you?
I'm good. How are you? I don't know if you already have them printed. Do you want to do? Are they in color? It's black and white. Okay. I'll save my color copies. You must have one thing.
Are they in color or?
They are. Do you all have copies of yours? Come here, I just want them now. Alright. So we come on an annual basis, basically, because it's required by state code to get an update of what we've done throughout the course of the year. But we really wanted to just make it a little bit more of an effort to be more open about what we're doing, getting more updates, so that way at the end of the year, I'm not just rattling through a whole bunch of things and then calling it done. So we thought we'd start doing some quarterly reports. You're welcome. And before I get started and everything, I brought some actual magazines where we have our ads at we and I thought it might be kind of interesting for y'all to see them. So yeah, we run on a fiscal year, so this covers from July through September of 2019. And you can see on the front, "Small Town Getaway, Big Time Charm" is kind of what our tagline is. And that's what all of our branding is revolved around. That's what all of our messaging content incorporates. So that's what we kind of try to stick to whenever we're pushing out any kind of specific advertisements, any of our public relations, anything that we do really revolves around that small town getaway, big time charm concept. So on the second page, whenever you open it up, you'll see, you know, our main focus is always revolved around advertising, public relations, and all of our social media connections with people. We get into every once in a while helping people carry events and doing that type of thing, but it really comes down to promoting and advertising. And not just promoting and advertising to Buchanan, but I think it's really important to speak to the point that we advertise, we push Buchanan and Upshur County out to a market that's outside of our immediate area. So we're hitting people in Pittsburgh, DC, Ohio, you know, all those surrounding regions. That's where we're really focusing our attention. So you can see all of the stats here, you know, our website visits, all of our social media numbers. Social media where it says brand builders, that's just free posts that we put out there. There's no money incorporated in it. It's just, you know, those everyday posts that we're making on Facebook and Instagram and all that type of thing. Whenever you see the paid ads, that's where we're actually paying for different social media promotions. So you can boost posts, you can run a specific advertising campaign. What's really cool about social media advertising is you can really target a very specific demographic of people. So, you know, we might just say Pittsburgh, but we might also talk to people who are really interested in food and kind of unique places to dine. So we can really hone in on specific interests. So it's really targeted and it's also super affordable. So social media is always a huge benefit for us. We do our online advertising campaigns, so that's just a variety of actual little ads that you'll see on the top of the website or along the side of a website. But then we also do some sponsored stories that are solely digital. So, you know, for example, we've worked with MyBuchanan and we've selected five different stories that we've done over this past year. And they've kind of shaped a message, they've shaped a story that they can then put through MyBuchanan, but then they're also using their social media channels and some promoted posts to reach that outside market as well. And that's been super successful because people don't want to see an ad in a magazine. They don't always want to see an ad on a website. They want something that's really personal and they really want to feel a connection, and that's what that does. Of course, we always do the print advertising, which you have copies of a couple magazines that we did in this past quarter. There's one with West Virginia Living Magazine. They're super popular. They have a really good readership. People really kind of keep up with what's in their magazines. We did a full-page ad in their summer issue, their fall issue, and I just confirmed that we're going to do a full-page ad in their winter issue. And then we did an ad with this, it's an outdoor company, an outdoor print company called Highland Outdoors. They're located out of Davis and they've really got a lot of great traction. And they're really focusing just on outdoors in West Virginia. And there's not really a publication that's focusing on that. And that's what they're doing. And they're right in the hub of outdoor recreation, being in Davis. They've got a great market over in DC that's coming in, so they've been a really great partner. And then you can also see, we do some email marketing. So we about once a month send out an e-newsletter and it just has a different topic, a different theme. And again, we're getting sponsorship from really all over the country. It's largely the surrounding states, but we have people from Texas, from Florida who have signed up for our information. So those are just kind of the specific ways of how we've advertised and how we've promoted this area. But then if you look on the overview, we don't only run our advertising campaigns, but we also just collaborate with local organizations, local businesses. So if somebody comes to our office and, for example, the West Virginia Art Educators posted their annual conference in Buchanan. And the local coordinator asked us, she said, "What can you do?" So we put together, and you'll see it in your packets, a printout that was distributed. I think they had just right around 100 attendees. So we had just a one-page printout that gave them an overview of what Buchanan had to offer while they were here for their conference. And then we also, in partnership with the chamber, we put together packets of information. They had a little folder that had brochures and coupons and just a variety of things. So that's something just, you know, on the side that we're doing, not only just advertising and putting out these Facebook posts, but we collaborate with a lot of local groups. We always participate with Wesleyan through Bobcat there, and we also host a Wesleyan service feller at our location every semester. We work with, again, local events. They're not always, you know, kind of the big festivals that attract outside visitors, but there are local events and it's important to support those. So whenever the Buchanan, the city of Buchanan hosted Fall Fest, we worked with them to distribute cards to all of the elementary school students to let them know, you know, what's going on with Fall Fest, when to come downtown, and when to participate in those activities. So we created those little cards, distributed them to 2,000 students in Upshur County. We also did the walking dinner tour with Fall Fest. I don't know if you all saw that. This was the second year that we did it. And basically, the concept is what it is, a walking dinner tour. You start at the first restaurant, you have your appetizer, and you go to the second, you have your entree, and so on. And we've done that two years for Fall Fest, and it's been so popular, we're going to start doing that quarterly. So sometime in January, February, we're going to do another one just to get people out after the holidays. And again, it's a really great way to try different restaurants and just, you know, go along with a group of people. You're meeting different people in your community. So it's been really popular, so we're going to start doing that. I attend tours and conferences. We distribute our travel guides and even partner brochures. So the Wildlife Center brochures, Roanoke Blast brochures, Festival Fridays, Starry Festival. We keep those in stock in our office at all times and we fulfill those requests as we get them. So through the Hall of Wellness Centers, all the other CVBs and visitor centers throughout the state, we send to them. And then just other places, you know, local hotels, that type of thing. We just keep them fully stocked. And then we also secured space for the Small Business Development Center. They hosted a conference in Buchanan this past quarter. And Sean is super flexible because I think the day before they were supposed to have their conference, their original space didn't quite work out and he fit them into the event center while we had two other events happening. So it works and we're always willing and open to help anybody and make it easy on them. So that goes into the event center. You know, that covers what the CVB aspect of things handles. But the event center is a whole new ballgame. And I always joke that every single day, there's something new with the event center. And we're like, oh, we hadn't thought about that. And we have to kind of stay on our toes. And Sean stays on his toes more than I do. But you can see just a few different photos. That top photo is, I think, from the bingo. They had over 300 ladies playing bingo. Sean had to place down the men's restroom just to let the ladies go in there and use the restroom whenever they were doing their breaks. But it was really popular and it was really cool. After that one happened, we got a couple phone calls from other organizations who saw how successful it was and they want to host a bingo with our facility as well. We have wedding receptions pretty regularly, a handful every three months or so. Sometimes we're really busy with weddings, sometimes it's kind of dead with weddings. It's just, it comes and goes. And then we always have our space open for just everyday meetings and conferences. And we've been picking that up more and more the past year of notice. We have a lot of repeat customers who kind of have it down pat right now. They know to contact Sean. He has the same layout. They know what their bill's going to be and they can just easily rotate that through. So that's been really nice to have. So we're starting to fill up those actual daytime slots, not just on weekends.
That's what I was going to ask you, if you're seeing a little more consistency since you're getting more and more years behind.
Yeah. Yeah, I mean, certainly there for a while it was pretty much all weekends. And not even all weekends. I think whenever Sean started, he said that year we had 12 events. And it was awesome. That's one event a month and you could say, alright, that's great. But if you look, we had 18 events in the course of the first quarter. And at first I kind of looked at that and went, oh, that doesn't really sound that great. But whenever you think about it, we only had nine available weekends because we do still share that space with a national bird unit. So that cuts into our weekends. So 18 events, we only had nine available weekends. So that shows that we're doing weekends and we're doing those weekdays. And to point out, we have one full-time staff person who oversees the entire facility. So that's Sean. Sean answers every single question that comes in, whether they rent the facility or they talk to Sean every single day for three weeks and then they end up not coming with us. I mean, he's covering and yielding all of those questions. That's one person who's answering questions, managing their event, attending their event. So whenever you look at it from that perspective, 18 events is actually pretty successful for just doing this.
I think since I've been commissioner in order, every time you come in, give us manual report to number, you're better every year.
Yeah, definitely. Definitely. And we're in an interesting situation right now where we have so many requests that Sean's been doing room flips from a Friday night, overnight Friday night, to like 2:00 AM on a Saturday to accommodate somebody on a Saturday. And sometimes it works, sometimes it doesn't financially. I mean, it works because he's able to pull it off. But I mean, we're in that spot of, is it worth the time, energy, and money? It's just a unique situation. We never thought that we would be in a place where we'd have to turn down an event because it's just not feasible for us. And then we also have staffing. I mean, again, Sean is out there. Yeah. Yeah, this weekend we have three events between Friday, Saturday, and Sunday, so. But it's a good problem to have for sure. Yeah. And we do have part-time staff that we've thrown in there, so they just are kind of there as needed on call as we have events because we can't really guarantee the work. But it's been really successful. So just a look, handling the regular events, but we also award grants to nonprofit organizations just to try to accommodate their budgets and fit them in and get them to use our facility. Sean has worked with the Mountaineer Food Bank and the recruiter with the readiness center and he helps coordinate that, make sure that the facility is kind of ready to go, make sure that parking's good to go. But if you've been out there, it's kind of mind-boggling how many people are coming through and getting food through the Mountaineer Food Bank. But it's a good program to have for sure. And then we just did an estimate within the first quarter. We're kind of estimating. We had a little over 500 guests just come in through the facility and probably about 120 or so actual overnight guests who stayed in our local hotels that are directly connected to events at the event center. Always fun. And then we do have a financial snapshot and, you know, it's just a quick overview of what we're looking at in this first quarter. And I'll point out, our hotel rental tax has been down the first quarter, and that's pretty typical. The first quarter is usually whenever I'm kind of allocating money and spending money that covers the entire year. So our expenditures are usually pretty heavy in July through September because we're just securing that space and paying bills. So we are in red for the first quarter, but it's nothing abnormal, nothing that concerns me. We just kind of have to know that hotel rental tax is down and just do some adjustments in the upcoming three quarters. But everything's great, rental revenue, $6,500. Again, that's kind of an odd cash flow because a lot of times people will pay way in advance, you know. Wedding receptions especially, they like to make payments and pay on their event space well in advance. So that way they know they have that bill and that burden taken care of. So the cash flow always kind of is funky, but it's typical and something we know to plan for. And then we'll also just see some of the ads that we ran, examples. And I threw in the price tag of how much some of these ads cost because I think it's important for people to know that it's certainly not a cheap thing to advertise and to do it and do it well. You know, you can, I could spend like a $750 ad in West Virginia Living Magazine, but it's going to be a quarter page that somebody's going to just go right over. But whenever they see this full-page ad in West Virginia Living Magazine, I would assume it's a big wow factor because I saw that photo and I saw this ad created and I thought it was a really good representation of our community. So for a full-page ad in West Virginia Living, it's about $2,000. A full-page ad in Highland Outdoors is $1,800. You can see that we really focus on outdoor recreation with that publication because that's what their focus is. We have an ad with Recreation News. They've been an awesome partner. They have a distribution list with all of the federal workers in the DC market. So we run ads with them continuously throughout the year, and this is just an example. And they're pretty affordable and we do this multiple times a year, so a really great partner for sure. And then again, you can see some examples. You can see what our printout was for the Art Education Association. Whenever they came for their conference, this is what we created and had distributed to 100 people who attended that conference. And then you can see some examples of what our actual Facebook ads or posts are. Not all of those are advertisements. Some of those are just those pretty social media posts. But yeah, that's a quick overview of the first quarter. If anybody has questions for me, I'm happy to answer, even for Sean with stuff that's happening out at the event center. I feel like this is definitely going to be a good year, especially for the events center.
It's starting off really well.
Yeah, definitely. Well, and we were joking, the first quarter, it looked pretty decent. But this one that we're in right now is absolutely insane because the month of October has been constant for the event center and like Sean said, we have been constant for the event center. And like Sean said, I mean, we have three events this weekend alone. So, yeah, we're happy.
Thank you for the time.
Yeah. Thanks. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
So you're Friday night for the Stocker, is there elimination dinner?
Yeah, we got Friday, the other one, and I think a burger on Sunday.